Oh, okay.
Alright, ready? Here we go. Okay, wanna open the planning board meeting of ten twenty-five, two thousand and sixteen?
Motion.
Mo- I'm, yeah, I need a motion to open.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor say aye.
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 Motion unanimous and carries. Got, um... I got one bill to approve for GZA.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's for seven hundred and two dollars even for Groveland Fairways.
So, motion?
Okay, need a second.
I'm gonna catch up.
Alright. So, I got a second from Perkins?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote unanimous and passes. Just, um, while we're doing other things, just let everybody know, we do have a new member, his name is Jonathan Perkins. Okay, over here on my right, and we have another new member, Lisa Chandler, who can't be with us tonight, but she'll be with us on the fifteenth, our next meeting, okay? Alright.
Can I ask how you guys approved that?
What? Yeah, I mean, Wally, it's, it's, the back line is this.
It's the back line?
Yes, that's the back line.
Okay.
Alright. It's, it's equal to or greater than the front line of a hundred and fifty feet, so, I mean, we, we have these things all throughout, every subdivision we're doing, you're gonna see.
Just checking.
Okay. Okay, but we're... Now, what, Mark Knights?
Yeah, he's got an A and R for lot line adjustment.
Lot line adjustment.
The only thing I see...
That's my brother.
Kenny.
The only thing I see, uh, missing is the driveway from the access from the frontage, I mean, it's plenty of it, but it's not noted on the plan.
We didn't have it on any of the other ones, uh, but, you know, whatever you guys say, you know? I have the site, I have the site plan open. Of course, it's not on this, it's a plan of land, but accordance potentially doesn't have to be on there.
You working on this one next year, or you going down the line?
Well, I, yeah, I wanna, wanna get on it.
So, the only thing missing is the driveway access, that's not on the A and R. A and R. A and R plan, adequate access, and it's plenty of it, but it just doesn't show the driveway.
You don't need to show it.
Yeah, that's part of it. Remember the catch basin issue on the lots where they were putting driveways?
That was in subdivisions.
Right, but, that's what made it start going through it. He said he's got it on the, on the other plan, somebody wants to pencil it in.
Yeah. Sure, you mean on this?
Uh, why don't you go hit your plan?
Yeah.
You know where it is?
The septic plan?
Yep, wherever, whatever plan you have to show with the driveway.
I have the septic plan, which is the site plan, got all the elevation.
Okay. That'll work.
Well, we can, we can go on to, what, Groveland Fairways? Okay.
Well, then I'll, I'll go with the office.
Okay.
Okay.
And this is what, the road acceptance?
Yeah, a couple things. Submitted a couple of plans, one was the road acceptance plan, the other was the ASB plan. And we had already, uh, we'd also requested, and I think we talked about it just informally last meeting, but you didn't have the, you didn't have a quorum, uh, because Wally wasn't present, but we had also requested a, a release of the remaining, uh, letter of credit. We were last before you in September, September fifteenth of twenty fifteen, we had reduced the, uh, letter of credit, which was originally a hundred and forty-one thousand and change, we had reduced it down to, uh, forty thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars at the time. So, in anticipation of what we thought was gonna be last meeting, we had asked, uh, Peter Williams to review the subdivision and specifically the ASB plan and confirm that everything had been done in accordance with your decision, and he confirmed that in a letter back on September ninth. So, those are the two things we hoped to accomplish tonight, was to get you essentially three things, sign off on the ASB plan, uh, recommendation on the, on the street acceptance, so we can go through that remaining procedure, where we go to the selectmen, they have a layout hearing, and then eventually onto town meeting. You don't have a special town meeting this year, do you, in the fall?
No, they generally don't at the, uh, annual town meetings anyhow, so, I mean, it's...
So, it'd be a while before it gets to town.
I didn't see that, that letter from, uh, Peter at all.
You submitted the ASB plans to Peter?
Yeah.
Did you submit it before the board?
Yeah, we submitted them, uh, you submitted them, right?
Yeah, we did, we made two submittals to the board and, uh, we had to do a correction and then...
What was the correction?
Uh, they wanted to add the mag nails.
Oh, right, oh, that's what that was all about, okay. Hey, what'd you guys end up doing with that? With that lot, with the grass? You guys reseeded that?
What's that?
The, the lot with the grass issue on the right side coming in, did you guys reseed that already?
Everything had been reseeded a couple times.
No, I mean, since we held the money back.
Yeah, that was last.
That was a year ago?
Yeah, that was over a year ago.
So, when's the last time you were in there?
Um, I think we were in the spring.
Spring, yeah, in summer.
Look, look up, see if the last date was on that one. Is it growing?
There's one in there, I mean, they refused it, they're not doing anything with it, so, I mean, that's not their fault.
Not watering it, right?
Okay, not watering, not keeping it up, so, I mean, what are we gonna do with something like that? You can reseed and reseed and reseed all day.
Then have them release it, then have them, uh, have the, uh, homeowners that said that they're, they're satisfied, and then take care of that issue.
I'd like to get a copy of that, though, you know, 'cause I haven't seen them.
You, you can have it, you can have my copy, I can get another one from Ryan.
Okay. And this, this is the mag nails, and yes, they've, they've been put in, yes, I know that, so...
And I think another concern that was raised at some point, maybe in the spring, when we were before you, was the cul-de-sac, and same, same deal with the cul-de-sac, and, um, how to water in at the cul-de-sac, and I understand, having spoken to George, is that...
Yeah, we replanted, we paid down, but I actually brought receipts in case anyone wants to go, you paid down the lot at all summer, I, up until the tour recently.
Hmm.
I haven't been out there myself, so, just like to do a tour real fast, and see what it is. On that, and then the, uh, and the homeowners that you, that, if you reseeded that again in the spring, since we withheld that, that funding, just get a release letter from them, or have addressed to the board that they're, they're satisfied, and they're all set, and then...
A release letter from the homeowner?
Yeah, but they're, um, you know, if you're done, if you've done now that seeding, and that grass came in, and the only reason why it didn't was because they didn't water it, it was kind of a drought summer, um, and they're satisfied, yeah, that's the only thing we're waiting for.
I haven't heard from any of the homeowners since the spring, so I don't...
Yeah, I haven't heard anything either, so...
We can make the request, I mean, I don't, you know, have, just knowing the history here, I'm not sure that they're gonna be quote-unquote satisfied, um, again, if it's, if it's their issue, and it's them not having watered it, that's caused it not to grow, I'm sure that it's quite possible that their response is to their nonsense, but there's not a whole lot we can do, we can't be out there watering their lawns.
Yeah, I, I don't...
We can make the request, and we can, we can check.
Yeah, make the request, and everything's set, and the last time, you know, you guys said you were out there in the spring, reloomed that, that whole area, got rid of the rocks, seeded again, and that's the only thing that we asked you to do, um, so, if that was all, how many yards did you bring in, you know, in the spring? Alright, yeah, just get that, and we'll, we'll take that under advisement, I think, and then we'll just do a quick circle tour, make sure everything's in. And then, next meeting, just, uh, bring it up. Still gotta hold something to the town releases it anyway. Except to... It's usually just ten, no?
Ten thousand?
So, yeah, we, we generally do hold back some, okay, and it's, it's, it's more for the road itself than anything else, in case there's a problem here or there.
Yeah.
We do have money to fix it at that point, that's all.
You remark anything for maintenance fund, for the, you know, the, uh, cleaning out the catch basins, that sort of thing in the spring, and all that?
Uh, you remark any of the funds for it?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think so, I think they were in the original estimate, but I think they were part of what, uh, part of the release request last time, I think.
Usually it's just, uh, Bobby usually asks for, I can't remember how many years, if it's got, uh, where's the drainage out there? Is that sewage can, or is it, uh, you, oh, no, you have the detention areas, right, that that goes into? Yeah, so it was just to maintain those for a couple of years till they stabilize, till the grass grew in, and that was it, it's not much, but it's just enough so they can get a backhoe in and clear a amount of...
So, how much was left?
Uh, as of last September, the remainder was forty thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven.
Even?
Yes, even.
So, we were holding fifteen plus the ten for the ASB, and I think Bobby, he only held like five or something for the maintenance fund. And it was only for a couple of seasons till it took root.
Yeah, it says, it says, um, we had, you had modified it by hand, so it originally said seventy-five hundred for the ASB, but the number went up by five, so it must have been twelve-five for the ASB? And then twenty percent, or twenty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-seven per section three, four, six, four. So, the two numbers for the...
So, twelve-five plus fifteen, that's, that's probably what we're holding, right?
That is what we're holding, yeah.
Yeah, forty?
I have forty, I checked.
So, we're just gonna go tour it, and then, uh, get the release letter to release the fifteen we're holding, um, on that lot, and then, um, the rest is just town meeting. Once it gets to...
Well, how much are we gonna hold back, 'cause we could release some tonight? We think that thing's fine up there, I mean, I...
Nobody's seen it.
I've been up there quite a few times, I mean, I haven't really seen any problems with it, since they got the cul-de-sac done, and the front side lot done with grass and everything, I mean, I don't know how much more you do with these things, tell you the truth, it's, you know...
It's just gonna take a drive, it's called due diligence, that was it.
Well, we, you have no idea how many times I'd been in and out of there over the years, same with Bob and Hamley.
Okay, no, I mean, since the ASB, we have a, we have a live application, okay, to ask him for a release, due diligence says we just drive by, and, uh, and just check it out, that's it.
Well, that's why we had, uh, we had asked Peter as long ago as we did, we were, you know, we were supposed to have been on the last, we were on the last meeting agenda, but obviously you couldn't take it up, 'cause you didn't have the, the quorum, so...
Yeah.
So, well, that's, that's...
Alright, tonight, you know, I, you know, what I thought was it's just gonna be the road acceptance, that's all, and these things, and that's it, but, um, you know, we got... I mean, I don't, I don't mind cutting it by half at least, you know, by twenty thousand, give you twenty thousand back, you know, whole twenty.
So, you got twelve-five for the road, fifteen thousand on that lot, plus five, so what's that?
What's fifteen thousand on what lot?
The lot that's, that we're talking about, that has the issue with the grass, the board voted to hold fifteen thousand dollars until we got it released.
I don't remember us holding fifteen thousand on that one, to tell you the truth, I mean, it is, all you can do with those people is, is tell them they have to water the grass, if they, if they seed it, and if they don't water the grass, then what do you do?
Um, you, you're thinking it's a grass issue, that we were addressing other issues, if they've resolved it, it's, it's a no-brainer in a couple of weeks.
Believe me, I have seen so many things on every lot, just water, 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 and everything, and they're doing nothing. What, how can you hold up for people like that? If they're not gonna do it, they're not gonna do it.
When's the next meeting?
That's their decision.
What, what's your, what's your posting in the next meeting? November what?
Well, we're going on November fifteenth, I was gonna suggest the first, because we gotta get back on the first and third Tuesdays.
Alright, so fifteenth?
Well, if I can get, you know, a board approval to do the first as well, okay, I'd like to get back to the first and third Tuesdays.
Okay, so...
I mean, you're the one that's been causing these problems that we can't meet, you're not showing, or you're showing so damn late, it's over.
It's work.
Well, it may be work to you, but, I mean, you gotta on the board, and, you know, I hate to say it, you know, it's, I got people to take care of.
Okay, so, our next meeting is, if we're holding twelve thousand five hundred till the town accepts the road, which is in the spring.
Yeah.
Five thousand for a maintenance fund, that's seventeen five, we have fifteen thousand at the moment, that's thirty-three roughly, so, so we can probably release five thousand, if you wanna do that tonight, 'cause that covers everything, we get a letter mid-November, get that released, and then you're still gonna be holding on to seventeen five until the spring.
Thought it was ten for the road, it was twelve-five for the roadway, or...
You read me twelve, whichever was in there, you, I thought you said it was...
I mean, this says, this says seventy-five hundred, the problem was, the, the text that's drafted here was modified by striking out the total amount, but the, the split wasn't, wasn't modified, so I don't know what the split, it says seventy-five hundred for the ASB plan, and twenty-eight three twenty-seven in accordance with the, the rules and regs, so...
So, if you wanna go from twelve-five down to ten, that sounds like very reasonable, so that way you could release seven thousand down. And then the rest of it's gonna be released in two weeks? Except for, you know, town meeting, we're holding for that.
So, I've got no issue with that two-step approach, with the caveat, as I said before, I, I can't, I can't guarantee to the board that I'm gonna have a letter from the property owner saying that they're quote-unquote satisfied, we made every effort to satisfy them over the past couple of years, so...
I, I think that, that stage passed a long time ago, as far as...
I think it did too, so, but we'll, we'll make an effort, we'll make a request over the next couple of weeks, and we'll report back to the board on the, on the, on the first or the fifteenth, whenever, whenever...
So, you're alright with seven thousand dollars released tonight, that's it?
Well, I mean, I, I obviously came here with the request to have much more released, but I understand that Wally wants an opportunity to, to see the site, I need a unanimous vote of the board tonight to get the, the release, so, um... I, I guess I'm gonna have to be satisfied with that, and we'll come back in a couple of weeks and, uh, prove to you that we made that effort to, to get a release, hopefully with a release in hand, and, uh, we'll make the request for the re, the, the additional amount to be released at the next meeting.
Okay, so, the vote is gonna be to release seven thousand from forty thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, so that would be down to thirty-three thousand eight twenty-seven left.
So, motion?
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, unanimous.
I have a release form here that I prepared, using your typical form. And there's a, there's an option to either check in full or, or the amount, so you can check the amount right in, uh, thirty-three and change, but you just stated... Where's the other lot?
This is one lot.
Yeah.
That's all I'm doing. Which one is this?
Okay, now, what are we putting in here, seven thousand in this box, or...
Uh, I think it's the amount that you're holding, I think it's gonna be the thirty-three, thirty-three thousand and change.
Holding. Thirty-three, okay.
Okay. Okay. It's about here.
Yeah. So, do you anticipate meeting on the first, or is it gonna be on the evening?
I, you know, I, you know, I'd like to get a vote on that, you know, Wally, I'd like to go back to first and third, and I'd like to set up a meeting on the first, as well as the fifteenth. I mean, you also have to understand that both I and Bobby have been meeting with the ZBA.
Yeah.
Um, you know, in the last week of the month as well, I mean, this week, I have to show up this Thursday night as well, so it's Bobby, so, it's, I'd like to get back to the first and third. So, I'd, I'd ask for that vote tonight, you know, just to, um, the next meeting would be eleven-one, the following meeting would be eleven-fifteen. Okay.
So, if you could add us to the agenda for the first, if you're meeting on the first?
I'd like to, that's fine, that'd be fine, uh, just, um...
What are you doing with the MyLars? Just submitting them? Those are yours?
Uh, yes, I think that's the street acceptance, yeah.
Okay, when are you gonna go before the VOS almost?
Well, it sounds like we've got a lot of time, sometime before town meeting, um...
Yeah, we hang on to those, then, just, uh, what do you want to do?
Yeah, well, I mean, our room is getting rearranged, the Concom is now in there.
They've been in there.
No, no, I mean, they're in there now, so, I mean, things got, things got pushed all over the place.
Oh, they combined us again?
If you, if you, um, are you gonna vote the street acceptance tonight, or you wanna wait until you have an opportunity to get out there before you vote?
Let's do the whole thing, if we don't have to do it till spring, I mean, it's, you know, um, why don't we just do the whole thing on the first, and then, uh...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just don't wanna lose them, I mean, there's no, you can't record them till after they accept that, I understand.
Right, so if you hold it till the first, if you can hold, unless you want us to take it, take it back.
I would, I, yeah, just so you don't get lost.
That's fine, take it back, bring it with us on the first, that's fine.
Yeah, just don't lose them after we endorse them, because then they have to go.
Right.
It's got six months to go before it's done.
Okay, um, you can do that.
Alright.
So, all we're doing tonight is really is, uh, is we released, uh, seven thousand dollars, that's it.
So, we'll take those plans with us, we'll come back on the first?
Yeah, that's fine, okay.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, does anybody have a MyLark?
Uh...
Yeah, because he's gonna mark the driveway on here, and then we're gonna... I will pause, the team.
Uh, put it on pause.
It's paused, we're paused.
I know where the other one's going, too, Wally.
Just put it on. That's it. You just have to show act, it's not, slide the sign.
Yeah, and, and I can show the one that's done, if you want, that's on the...
No, that's right, this one's already done?
Yeah.
Because you don't even have to open one.
Right. Peter saying, do I have to get the phone, I didn't see a response, maybe he responded, but he replied all, he sent it up?
Well, no, I'll take that back, it was with the P.
Okay, so you're still waiting on, on forty-four, fifty-three?
Yeah, I mean, Peter can go on, totally, and I've been in touch with Peter.
Doing all the commercials, uh, all the...
Do everything.
A lot of houses in town here?
No, I do nothing in town. Ethics violation.
Is that a conflict?
Okay. Yeah, I only do volunteer work in town.
If somebody called you from the town, just come and work in there.
Yeah. I send them to John Collins or Steve Davis.
Yeah.
I don't know, I suppose it's paperwork you could file, or whatever, but it's not worth the aggravation, so, I've never done it, I do a ton of volunteer work, you know, I do wire churches and libraries and everything else in town for free.
Yeah, yeah. Stay on there, no.
Do that kinda stuff, but...
Yeah.
I just wanna be sure that things are rolling off, we're working the background, so I'll, I'll have, I'll have, I'll have, I'll have, I'll make sure he drops the...
I'm twenty-five years old. I'm still here.
Uh, you know, because I...
Be careful.
You always have a picture of somebody, you know, back then, and then you see them like twenty-five years later.
Yeah. Still up here.
Yeah.
Someone, yeah, so far.
That's good, that's good.
Yeah, the years pass pretty quick, you know, but now we got a new generation coming in.
There we go, I'll give you a fun fact for your street, that you may or may not know, did you know that your street was an experiment? Where the sidewalk was removed, and a five-foot pedestrian walkway bike path is on the right-hand side, all the way down.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, goodnight, guys.
Like, it's built in a roadway, or...
From the curb, from the curb, come out, that's why your street's wide, you know, so, there was a line there at one point in time, I think we were up, so, from the curb, come out five feet, that's the pedestrian bike path walkway.
Really?
However, the residents never looked at the memorandum, so they didn't know, so they were parking in the middle of it, so the kids, everybody pushing the strollers was banging into cars, so...
Didn't work very well, huh?
Uh, well, it was an experiment, we actually did two of those, one of them's up on Delhi, um, Delhi, um, I...
I think we're the only house that's turned over in that neighborhood since it was built.
Pretty much, and it's, um, you know, it's, it's typical too, for, you know, um, going through, but it still exists, it's still there, so, but people were parking in the middle of it, and, uh, and yeah, there was a, matter of fact, we still have like two hundred bucks on the, uh...
Was it paved?
It, it was, it's paved, see, one of the problems was that we didn't have a sidewalk plowed, so, and people weren't plowing their sidewalks, so, the developer came in and said, we'll try to fix that, here's a solution, so we labeled it a prototype, and we actually did it, we went wider on the pavement, and it, it, it made total sense, 'cause it gets plowed every year, and, uh, during the winter, and the, the problem was, is that the residents didn't know, or if they did know, they didn't appreciate it, they didn't honor it, so they didn't park outside the five-foot line, they wouldn't against the curb.
Yeah, I can see how that would feel weird if you weren't, uh...
Yeah, but it was a line, it was painted, and it was, it was stenciled and everything else, and...
Who was the developer for the...
That was, um, Jim Bussing and Larry Kelly.
Who?
Jim Bussing and, and Larry Kelly.
Speaking of which, has he taken over Greens? He's taking that over.
Kelly, I, I don't know, I mean, it's way farther.
Okay, so, uh, the only thing missing is your driveway access, so with your best penmanship, just give us two driveways that, where you know they're going, in from Center Street, and just put the word driveway, and that's that.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Because that's the only thing that you're missing.
Alright.
And you may reference your own plan.
Yeah.
So, that's why you don't have a sidewalk.
I never even noticed that one should be there and isn't, because there aren't sidewalks on a lot of the roads, as far as...
All the new ones there are, but, yeah, I was telling Bobby that we, that was the experimental street.
I know, I...
And, uh, just the...
That was like twenty years ago, almost.
Yeah, well, it's still there, it's just nobody uses it, we didn't take up the pavement, so, so if you wanna get a painting party, you can reactivate it. Go down memory lane with some folks, remember this? Oh, yeah, is that what that was? Go look up your old memorandum when you have a chance, we'll see it somewhere. Yeah, okay.
Are you, are you close?
No, just mark it driveway, you don't even have to, I guess, it looks like a driveway, but, yeah, it's a driveway. So, go to state pause, maybe. Want to take it off pause, and flag the motion?
Do you have a form? A what?
The form A, application, lot line change?
I don't.
I don't know.
He asked the same question last time.
I should know. Should I have it?
Do my job, right?
Right, I know.
Fifty dollars.
Yeah.
Fifty dollars.
Yep.
Fifty dollars for the application.
For the law light change, yeah.
Oh, alright.
So, on an A and R...
Cash?
On an A and R, and a subdivision plan required the topo, hundred-foot diameter circle, you jogged this, because they had him put in a Latham's access road, which was, you know, awful nice you guys to work out, by the way.
Yeah.
Um, and then, the minimum lot width is one-twenty, which is, I should have kept on that, which I have a question, it's a hundred and twenty feet wide, so, three oh three five says that you can't have the lot built from the exterior frontage, uh, twinned it down to any less than eighty percent, which is one-fifty frontage, so, that this is, uh, theoretically supposed to be a hundred and twenty-eight, this is a hundred and twenty-two, okay? But you also need to show adequate access from the driveway, okay, as a matter of fact, eleven, eleven, thirteen, thirteen Main Street, is that yours or your brother's?
Main Street?
Yeah.
Oh.
Wait on.
Must be Jojo's, right?
That, who's, remember the, the access way in the back, the little narrow road, which, was that six or thirteen Main Street?
Yeah, that was you, where?
The one that burnt down? Had two houses?
Oh, well, it does.
Twenty-five years ago, so what was, what's the address on that? It's the thirteen or six, or one of those, right?
Which one, Bob?
The one that was only like six feet wide, at one point. The one that was only like six feet wide, at one point.
That's the Puntucket, right next to Puntucket, didn't you do something there?
Oh, the two lots over there, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, what's the house then? It's a thirteen or six or thirteen, I think thirteen, thirteen Main Street.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is a derivative of thirteen Main Street, because the, the access on the A and R handbook, you had to have adequate access from your frontage, and that was a common draw, so, um, so under the A and R handbook, that's, you have to show, so plenty of access, it's all adequate, cause it's flat here, um, but you still gotta show where that is, to meet the security requirements for an A and R, so, that was it. You completed, and you have a form made to fill out?
Yes.
And then we float the motion.
Okay.
Yeah. It was after the S, S turn way down. So. So, motion to approve lot line adjustments for lot eleven Echo dash two and eleven Delta dash two. Center Street.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, it's unanimous.
Good.
And if we have another pen, the actual Mylar, I think, you can find this. What do you got? What was that?
You said this is it.
Yeah, this is a farmer's access two, because way back over here, and it, it was, um, it was always there, but it wasn't really noted, um, before, so they worked it out for the, for the access to showing the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, um, cause this was just the whole big plan area, so. And, uh, so they worked on that, and finally got it. So, so then came in and he slid everything over, so that the Latham's could still get to the, the farm, cause it's a farm over there. Do a lot of hay and other stuff. And the last thing, I just. Gonna nail down where this was. So, it took some negotiations.
Did those guys take these plans that we gave?
Yeah, yeah, they took them, cause they were.
Hey, what's the maintenance fund now, Bobby, is it five grand?
What?
The maintenance fund, is, is it, is it five grand for a couple of years, is it, yeah?
Yeah, mine, we used to, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's all, so we, we're only gonna hold fifteen then by the time we're done. Okay, ten for the, uh.
Yeah, that's all we should be doing.
Yeah.
That's done.
So. Just put lot line adjustment on there somewhere.
We're here.
Yeah.
What I'm gonna try to do is, you know, get back on course, the first and third.
Yeah.
So, the better thing to do is to hold the meeting on eleven one, cause we're gonna have them back anyhow, and then we'll do eleven fifteen when, you know, Billis will be in.
And I'm here on the first.
Grovelon Fairways will be in, oh, not Grovelon Fairways, Grovelon Auto will be in on eleven fifteen. So. I don't know about Caruso, I just, I know.
How about, um, isn't someone bu- uh, Dahula interested in, uh, Wood Street too? Did they call you or they?
No. No. Maybe, unfortunately, I'll tell you, she'll call the last minute, so, which isn't good.
So, when's the next meeting?
Uh, eleven one.
So, he's gonna sign this.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, yeah.
You're gonna go to the clerk tomorrow.
Yeah.
She's gonna sign it.
ZBA Thursday night.
She's gonna stamp it.
You know, it's, it's, I'd rather go back, one and three.
After she stamps it.
And then we'll meet, I mean, you know, you wanna come in and.
Cause you're gonna need one with this.
Yeah.
She gets to keep one with.
I know, I mean, that's dragging, I hate to tell you.
I gotta go tomorrow, I have to be there tomorrow, I have a conversation.
We only give them. Yeah, so. Here's your form.
That's alright, that's alright, I mean, I.
You're gonna be there, right?
Yeah, I'll be there.
We voted dissent, so we can endorse it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, there's nothing else tonight then, huh?
Well. I don't know what, what.
We could go to bed early tonight, Bob. I'm gonna watch the World Series.
Oh, yeah.
I can dig one too.
Big one.
Alright, that's it.
Oh, we'll talk about Sunset though, before we.
Yeah, yeah, I wanna, yeah.
We gotta talk about that.
Another one?
Yeah, I wonder, I'm trying to look at it.
Yeah, we gotta talk about that.
Alright, let's do that.
And then, maybe you just let, you know, John know what else is coming, cause it sounds like, cause everything's rolling downhill now, you know, we were doing alright there for a while. They're not big, I mean, they used to be twenty-five houses, they're like eight now, but.
Okay.
And some, some are three, so, I mean, it isn't much, but it's the same thing.
Jim's gonna sign that. Form for you, coming down, boys?
Yeah.
So. Just two, he keeps the Mylar, and then Jim, you're gonna give him that form. Already briefed him on procedure, he's gonna go see Ann tomorrow, get three copies, timestamp, and then give us one.
I won't sign.
I'll be in against next month for another lot line change.
Okay.
I'm not.
I get enough of them, I'll, I'll know how to do it next time.
I'm gonna have John sign it.
Yeah, Bob, don't look at it, you're not supposed to look at it. You, remember, you recused yourself.
I recused myself, because you're my cousin.
He ran out, he ran out, he ran out of the room.
You guys are cousins?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the trouble with a small town.
Yeah.
There's, there's one out, there's.
This guy looks familiar, I don't know.
I tried to get up a boat on it, I can't do nothing.
I'd have to laugh, but the ethics thing, cause there's a town out west, it's, it's a very small town, it's like a hundred and some people, and everybody literally in the town is related to one another. And they all hold a damn position, you know, and it's like.
Did you keep one?
No, I did.
We, we will, it's this one here.
Alright, take it out.
He's.
You can do that.
Okay.
Did we sign it?
You stay out of this, Bob.
Yeah. There's your Mylar again.
Okay. This and one, and one of the three copies goes to the register.
Yeah.
We get the other one in the box.
Yeah.
And gets the other one, then, after you get this reco- sorry, after you get this recorded.
Yeah.
Six certified copies.
Yeah.
And the disc. Get the disc, the disc.
And the disc.
Yeah, and if you do it, they won't charge you at the register, if you go.
Alright.
Cause you're the owner.
So. So, have, um.
Will you go for me, Bob?
Have Steve on the, have Steve put the driveways on the disc.
Okay.
Show him that.
It goes from doing everything right.
So, he can just go click, click, and show the driveways on for you, so they're on the disc.
You can have the copies.
Three discs, six copies, we're good.
Three discs?
Six copies.
Six copies. Three, six.
And one form A stamp.
I got it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Thank you, see you on the next tour.
Yeah.
Okay, what's next?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, happy night.
Okay.
Happy Halloween.
Did you get your building permit application, Kenny?
What, Bob?
Did you get the building permit application?
Oh, no, you got one then?
No. Denise signed it?
Oh, yeah, no, I.
Yeah, yeah, he's got it, he's got it.
The sign-up sheet?
Yeah.
Yeah, all signed.
All done.
Thank you, Bob.
Um, okay, Gary Caruso, Grovelon Auto, no shows.
Okay.
Okay, I'll give you a story on, uh, Caruso, we don't have any idea what the hell's going on there.
That's across the street.
Okay.
Where the package store is next to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Grovelon Auto is, um, they have just, it's been the engineers, they've been having a terrible time. Just getting their act together to get the advertisements right.
Okay.
First, they had them five days apart.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, I know, so it's been trying to tell them seven and seven, okay, seven days apart, tha- then seven days to, you know, hold the meeting.
Did you give them the form?
Huh?
Did you give them the form?
They have the form, they have the form and all that, so, I hate to tell you, it's, it's a struggle with them.
Alright, so what's, um.
They should be here on the fifteenth at this point, that's what they're geared for.
Okay.
Okay, so the last one now is Sunset Circle.
Yeah, what's with that?
And, um.
And I got that email, and I called that lady, left her message, so.
Well, we shouldn't be talking to her right now, I can tell you right now, we don't know, we don't know, we need to get the soils tested.
Why, what's up? I was just, uh.
No, we, we need to get the soils tested, and she's got an allegation out there, if you do go up there, when I first came in, they looked a little funny, I, you know, it could've just been that it's, you know, your typical little, you know, junk that, uh, they pull out of a foundation.
So, who's running the development now? Who's running, that's what I can figure out.
It's Wallace now, the owner of the property.
Yeah.
So, he's, he's running it?
He's running it.
What do we have on?
I called Scott Green today, I says, where did you get that material from, he says, a couple sites, he says, I'll have it tested, I said, well, I have to be there if you have it tested, I have to go to Stonem, that's, one of the labs are, are in Stonem, so, he says he'll do it, but I don't know.
How's he gonna do it if he's not running the show anymore?
Right, he said, I'll do that, one more thing, so, I asked Denise what we have in the account.
Yeah.
She said a hundred seventy-six thousand, um, that's the bond.
Right.
We don't have any in engineering review.
No.
So, we gotta.
Transfer.
What should we, we should do is ask Wallace to give us some money.
We need to talk to, I, we need to talk to Denise first, okay, make her aware of the situation, make her aware, it could be a problem, that it has to entirely be removed from the site, okay? At that point, we need to inform Wallace, we don't know yet, hope we need to ask some questions, get some tests back on the soil, see if it is a possibility of being a problem, alright, and we will do what needs to be done. I mean, it was very shiny when it first came in, you know, and I, I just thought, you know, well, they might have dug it out or something that's wet, but then when they spread it, it was still shiny, but it also had a, a funny gleam to it, I mean, and I'm, I'm not gonna say what I thought it was, but, you know, it could've been a substance of some nature, but. At this point, we don't know, and we gotta find out, once we find out.
How many yards they bring in, or tons?
Well, it's quite a bit, I can't, it's, they covered the whole area.
Yeah.
Does, uh, John still do that, neat, they still test?
And Larry told me today, he doesn't want anything to do with the job now.
Why? Cause of that?
He was giving prices, and then he said, how the hell with them, because they were a little rude to him or something, I don't know, the whole thing.
So, they gotta fi- figure this out, do, we don't have anybody living up there, do we?
No, oh, no, no releases, I told Sam today, I said, I know the planning board won't do any releases until we get this straightened out.
No, no.
Okay. No. So, the woman is a potential owner, she's not really.
She's a potential, well, they, she put fifty thousand dollars down.
Oh.
And, I mean, the way, the way she went.
So, Wallace is still holding it?
Right.
Yeah, alright, so, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm telling you right now, I do not want you talking to that woman until we find out about these soils and whether they're okay or okay.
Well, that's the developer's responsibility, he should be calling, she should be calling him.
Well, he's not the developer anymore, okay, I mean.
What do you mean, you said Wallace's.
Wallace is.
So, she needs to call Wallace.
But, I don't know if she knows that at this point, okay?
Well, that's his responsibility.
Look, Wally, we're gonna take care of this the right way, okay, we're not gonna get this thing tangled up and everything, so, let, let's, don't go talking to people, we don't know what the facts are, okay?
I think you're under.
That's all there is to it.
Misunderstanding, but returning someone's phone call, to tell them to direct it over to their real estate agent, so they can find out who is in the charge of the development is, is clearly something within reason, so.
Well, it's, it's, the guy that's running a show up there now, I mean, you know, if he's, is he gonna be there for the duration or not, we don't know that, it's Wallace we have to talk to, and I'd rather do it through Denise at this point.
Is Denise gonna send him a letter to come to the planning board now, or do we have to do that?
No, she's, well, she said, I talked to her today.
Yeah.
And she would ask the girl for some money, the girl in Wallace's office, to send the, some inspection money, I just have to find out how much is, it's gonna cost for testing, I don't.
Who's doing the review on that?
Uh, Woody did the review.
Yeah.
Woody's doing the review?
Yeah.
Has there been any review done period to date? Since that started? In sites, uh, benchmarks, uh, elevations?
Well, this, this, this is the whole thing at this point, what we could do is we could do what's known as an interim ASBIL, okay, and it's just simply to catch up on what has been done, what needs to be done at this point, I mean, we obviously know what needs to be done.
Who's their engineer in this?
It's cleared up and everything.
I can't remember who.
Yeah, I know, this thing, this thing's had so many durations.
They had, it was a, it was a guy in what, North Andover, I believe, this is the same guy, I think, that.
I mean, we could call.
Did it originally.
Let's call, you know, I don't mind calling Woody and see what's it gonna cost to test the soil.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, shouldn't we have a full up as to where we stand now, especially if we're changing the guard on contractors?
Well, this, where I'm getting this interim ASBIL, okay, is from Woody, I talked to him a couple of weeks ago, and he said, what you really should do with an interim ASBIL.
So, have them submit.
So.
Right, but get a price, so we could, then we can.
Yes, yeah, we can't.
So, we can review it.
We can't just do that, but when this thing came up, I mean, it's like, first I thought, you know, Larry was gonna go in there and clean up that site.
Right.
Okay, had that gotten done, that thing would probably been in a lot better shape at that point, so that all that was really left is bang up the houses. But the reality is, I took a ride up there today, and nothing's been done, obviously.
The bank and wash down the Dartmouth, you know, the color sack and the car, that bank and wash down, and it washed down into Tony's yard.
Yeah. Right, so he, that's the wall issue.
So, you know, this is, there's a little bit of, you know, and if they had stabilized it, Larry, you know, Larry was over there talking to the contractor three weeks ago. Like he said, three weeks ago he had done it.
Yeah.
We'd be not too bad a shape there.
Okay, so, so just for, um, point of order on that, so, so we're gonna ask Wallace to get in here and then have his engineer submit an interim ASBIL for us to review. Then we're gonna get the engineering account up to speed to review the interim ASBIL.
Right.
And then issue a report, and then we're gonna have to have Wallace lay out his plan for completion and timeline on the remaining items of the subdivision.
And with the interim, we wanted soils testing of the material part of it.
Yeah.
How's that sound?
Doesn't.
That's fine.
Doesn't neat still do that stuff?
Who?
Neat. Is John, John Clement, is he still doing that?
I, you know, at this point, I think what we gotta do is we gotta talk to Denise and talk about many things on this.
Yeah.
What is the correct way for us to now take care of this thing, because this thing has traveled straight down a slippery slope right from the beginning, as we know, Scott Green.
So doing eighty-one.
We knew he was gonna be a problem in the beginning.
Doing eighty-one W.
Hmm?
Doing eighty-one W.
Well, we could do that, but, I mean, it's, it's simply that, at, at this point, where there's a break in one developer to another developer, and I can't say this guy that's now in charge of it is the developer, it's Wallace who's really the developer at this point.
Right.
So who's, I, I guess I missed something.
So, it's like, we're not being able to talk to the right guy first.
Who's, it, Wallace is, is, he, he, he's the capitalist on this project, but is he also the G C?
Right. Well, he is right now.
Okay, so who's driving the trucks and lifting the?
He has got two people, uh, he has got a company that he uses, that they build houses in the, like, the west of Boston, and he has them in, he's trying to finish that one house where the, the two ladies are gonna move into.
Well, we, nobody can move in if you got a contaminated site.
No. No.
So.
And the, and there's a few issues with the catch basins are raised, that's why it flooded the other night, Friday night I was in there, that's why the bankings was washing out.
So all the.
The catch basins are raised so high.
Yeah.
That the water level gets up high enough, because the bankings are high, and then it goes over the bank and it washed out the bank and going to Dartmouth. And, uh, in the, into that Tony's yard, so.
Okay.
Wallace is the general right now.
Okay, so, just, interesting comment, so, the building permits that were issued, that were issued to Scott Green.
No, they're issued to another, Scott Green. Doesn't have.
If they'd had a changing of the guard of the G C, then the permit's gotta get reissued too, or transferred.
No. The only building permit issued is the house that's up. The other ones were just foundational.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
But what about for the site filing and paperwork, all the forms, fourteen, fifteen, et cetera, we got all new names on everything, that's where your eighty-one W comes in.
Yeah, that was, right, that, was that Scott Green?
Yeah, everything was.
Yeah, I can't re, let's see, it's been so long.
So, we, we just.
This thing has traveled three years.
Yeah, so you just need Wallace to come in and give us a full set of docs. And then re-up the engineering account, have his engineer do the interim, we review it, and then steps forward in what's needed, and there may be more dollars needed back in there, even though we released them.
Right, I never thought of the, um, the forms for the subdivision, that's right.
So everything's.
Was that under Wallace, we'd have to go check.
We'd have, we'd have to look at it.
We have to check if that was under Wallace or another company.
Have them bring in the whole set, cause they recorded it.
Yeah.
So, have them bring in what they've got and the changes.
There's more to this thing, and, and right now, I think we gotta really talk to Denise, I mean, I wanna keep this definitely out of any lawsuits on this damn thing, and, um.
Hmm.
You know, the other side of the coin is I wanna get to a resolve. And, I mean.
We should, you want me to go look to see who, the, the definitive plan is filed?
If you want.
It's the memorandum and the existing forms and the releases that would have it, actually, you know who might have it?
Right.
Is, uh, the building inspector, he might have a full copy on that.
We would have it too.
He'd have the most current, because they had to pull the permit. Who's in charge?
No, he, yeah, but on the building, but I'm talking on the subdivision itself, I can't remember who that was.
No, Jesus. So.
Well, I could look after the meeting, we can look.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it, right now, I mean, we've got word through the building inspector today. Okay, and that's it, that's all we know, and, you know, it's, it's, it's gotta travel another route as well as here first, I believe, before we go stepping into it. And at that point, I want it, I want it to be, you know, that, uh, we can work with Wallace on this thing, and that's it, and we're not gonna be. You know, having the building inspector just cease and desist everything, you know, I don't wanna be into a fight, if we end up into a fight, I mean, this thing gets really bad at that point. I mean, we knew right along that Scott Green was gonna have a problem. He has. He's had many problems. And the reality is, yes, we were right, but that and twenty-five cents doesn't buy anything. So, at this point, we have to pick up the sticks, and we gotta pick them up in the right order, that's all, to get this thing moving again.
Actually, we don't, he does, so.
Well.
We, they have to come in.
Then, you know, if you leave it up to Wallace, let me tell you, the way it is right now, they'll just keep building.
Brief us on. Wait, Jim.
So.
Jim, yeah, they have to come in and brief the board on where we are, the interim ASBIL is, is fine, that, that sounds like a really good idea. Get that in, so we know where it stands, everybody can review it, all the paperwork's swapped, short of that, they don't come in, we eighty-one W.
Yeah.
Thirty days notice, boom, shut the thing right down, it's done, then they have to re-sign.
You know, they don't have a building, they only have a building per- permit on one house, Jim.
Yeah.
Those are, the other one is a foundation, and he started building without a building permit.
The other ones, yeah. Yeah, right, all he ha- all he has right now is the one for the two ladies.
So we gotta find out, I agree with Walter, we're gonna find out who, if, if this is in another name, we have to do an eighty-one.
And that's it.
Right. And, and, and it's up to the applicant to come before the board, we're not gonna chase them, but we are gonna clean the site up, if we have to, if it comes down to, if the soils come back, then, you know, he's gonna have to take care of it, doesn't, hopefully the, the funding that we have in place. And we also have that funding in place for the road, so the road can be finished. Um, and then it stops, until somebody comes in.
I mean, the other thing is, I mean, like, you know, we got the memo from the building inspector, and I did wanna tar, I, I didn't see it until later on in the day.
I talked to him today, he told me there's, there's only one building permit, and that's the house that's being built. The other one, he just gave a foundation, and Scott Green kept building it. You know, he, he started, instead of just doing the cap, he kept going.
Yeah.
Well, my, my family would like to pull the building inspector into it too, I mean, he has a lot of expertise in this thing.
But, gentlemen. I, I agree, have them here at the, at the meeting, but it, it's the, and, and that's probably a great idea, have, the onus is on the developer to brief the board and, and provide what is necessary, so that we can go forward, if we can. So, get them in here with all the new docs, what's going on, the interim building report, fund the engineering, all the same day. All this is, let's set it up as quick as we can.
What I wanna make sure is Denise is alright with this, she's literally the chief legal officer of the town as well.
But this isn't a legal issue yet.
Uh, it could be.
We'll find out who, what the, uh, plant, let's find out the definitive plan.
Right, so, so, but it, it's still.
In the, uh, in the.
We just have to notify Wallace to update the board on what has happened with the changing of the guard and his intentions on going forward, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, get that interim report in, fund the engineering review, and then let's see where we are, cause that's gonna take a couple months, so we're into the spring, they can't do anything anyway at this point, you find soil issue. You know?
Yeah, and he, and, uh, Sam told me, he, he, the, he, when he talked to the lady, she, they had promised she'd be in by the first of December, I mean, that's not gonna happen.
Uh, well, that's, you know.
So.
Okay, so.
We've gotta get that, let's find out who the things are, yeah, we better get, we have to get Wallace in, right.
We, Wallace's in here.